...to order. If you please stand in front of the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this public time, we offer immunity from the community to have a public statement. Seeing no one here, we'll go ahead and proceed. And we'll move right into our discussion with the search consultant from Community College Search Services, Fran White.
Thank you very much, trustee Rojas. And hello to all of you again. It's very nice to be here again with you. And I do believe today we're going to get a lot accomplished. And what I'd like to do is start with the proposed calendar for the search. And I believe Teresa made sure that each of you got a copy of this. Now, again, this is a proposed calendar, subject to your approval. So we'll go through the timeline and see what you think about the timeline. So we're already in April, May, and there are a few things that would be nice to accomplish before your faculty leave for summer. I know that some of them teach in the summertime, but typically, search committees and screening committees don't operate over the summer for obvious reasons, because of governance reasons. So what this means, given that you will still need to select or appoint committee members, I think that's going to be one of the first things you want to establish, a process for selecting your committee members. You understand you'll need committee members from all of your constituent groups. You probably will want a member from the public, a community member, most likely. And I know we talked about this last time, but you may decide you want one or two trustees on the committee. So this is something you need to discuss going forward as you decide how you're going to appoint your committee. I'm not aware of a policy, but I do know that some college districts have policies around, or procedures, I should say, around the appointment of committee members for chancellor search or president's search, and it's all spelled out. But in the absence of that, it's okay. You still would model, you know, the same type of composition where you have all your stakeholders and your community input. So that's going to be one urgent thing to do before school is out, while everybody is still around and can say yea or nay. Teresa, you have any thoughts?
I was going to say, school is, we have had graduation, so we're out.
So you're virtually done.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can still contact folks, obviously.
But you can still contact them.
Absolutely.
Things, obviously, won't really get rocking and rolling until September, for the most part, in terms of committee meetings. But there was, you know, there's always that hope that you can get started early, and you have your first meeting, and, you know, set the parameters of the search. But I think this timeline is flexible enough, and there's enough wiggle room in it, so that as long as you're able to contact those individuals you'd like to see on the committee, that will have to suffice. Any thoughts about that, or questions about that process?
Yeah, I believe that we have, from past, we have a list of standing committees, not necessarily people that are involved in the committee, but a list of committees that have, in the previous years, been a model of use. Am I right on that?
Right. I recall in the past, for chancellor, we would reach out to, like, the YFA president, the academic senate presidents at both colleges, CSEA leadership team, and ask for them to bring forward names. Now, how the board selected who was on it, I don't know that piece.
No, I, you know, this is the first time we've really been involved in the process, I think, at the beginning, in the time that I've been here, but you and, the same thing. So that original position right now is something that's a little foreign to us, in a sense. But I think that if we could use the committees that, the standing committees that are already existing, maybe we can have those forwarded to us. And then if there's something that we want to take out, or something that we want to add.
Well, I think we form the committee. I don't think we go to a standing committee.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
And I think what Teresa said is, we certainly have the right to modify it, but we need someone representing faculty, you know, whether, how we do it, you know, but the constituent groups that need to be a part of it, that's pretty much standard practice.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And then how we pick the community people, or how many are board members, that's up to us.
Fran, one thing that I've read that encourages in a district to include in the search committee the college presidents, or at least one of the college presidents. I'd like to get your idea on that, because I can see issues both ways.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea to have a college president on the committee. I can tell you, in multi-college districts, the one college president is usually the chair of the committee unless there's some other designation. So it's an absolute good idea to have some representation there, because your chancellor is going to have to work with the college presidents, and it's just good to have their participation. So I know this is, you know, predominantly, you know, to colleges, but same principle applies if you want to extend that invitation.
But are you recommending one or two college presidents on the committee?
One.
I think it should be two.
I do too.
What's the negative part of having both?
Well, the negative part is that one who wasn't invited might feel a little put off. It's not required to have a college president. But in multi-college districts, there's usually one or two, depending on how many colleges are in the district.
But he asked, what was the negative of having both?
Oh, probably none. Probably none, unless one of them is going to be the chair. And maybe that wouldn't hurt one of the others' feeling at all, either.
They could let them.
There's no negative to having both.
Yeah, they can decide that, if we.
Because I would think that having both would be, especially our district, especially with our district.
I think because our colleges are so different.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that the needs perceived from the Columbia perspective and the MJC.
Right.
We might benefit from having both.
Absolutely, I agree.
My question would be, what's a manageable number? We don't want too many people on there. So what's a manageable number that you feel it works well? And then we can start thinking about the committee from that aspect.
That's a very good question. Somewhere between 13 and 15. Some committees go as high as 19. I did the Foothill College, I just finished the Foothill College president's search. There were literally 19 people on the screening and selection committee. It worked out fine. We had a process, we had our procedures, no problems. But you do want to keep it manageable, but more important, which is why it ended up being 19, more importantly, you want to make sure you cover your bases and get everybody on there who needs to be on there.
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm, the committee that I'm sitting on right now, they have 19 people.
Oh, gosh, that seems too many.
It's, by the time you go around, getting input from 19 people, they're all afternoon.
Yeah, I'll have some long meetings there.
So I would think that somewhere in the area of 13 would probably be manageable.
Yeah, 13 to 15.
Because if we're already having the board members and the two college presidents, say that's one-fourth of the committee already.
How do you feel about having our student trustee? Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely. Every search committee has their student.
Student representation.
Representation, and it's usually the student trustee. Sometimes it's the student trustee and the associated students body president, ASB president. Sometimes it's both. So in the case of Foothill, it was both. But definitely, yes, good idea.
Question on that topic? May, when they hold their election, so would you recommend the new student trustee or the old, the former?
The new trustee. Don?
I took a course in lobbying one time, and the guy said, "Do not ignore the ladies that work in the front office, because they have more power than you think they do. They can kill you if they want to." So my question is, should one of those, and as much as they work closely together, should they be consulted?
Okay, so my experience with that question is, there's usually someone from the chancellor's office on the committee. It may be the executive assistant, or someone working really close with that office, because you definitely want that input and that feedback for obvious reasons. So the answer is yes, someone from the chancellor's office would be nice to have on the committee.
Well, in another, in another meeting that we had, previous meeting that we had, I appointed myself as the chair with Teresa as the co-chair, and Gina as the EEO. And so there's three of us, and probably Gina, who, and, well, actually, both work closely together with the chancellor. And so my opinion, I think, would be that.
That could work.
Those would be the people that would represent.
That could work also. It should be someone at this level, or the executive assistant. And if Gina and Teresa are going to be, and they are, helping with this anyways, I think that could work just fine. And then the rest of the committee would be your community member, or members, you may want somebody from the foundation on the committee.
Yeah, I was going to say, the suggestion had been that we had, that, and this was just a suggestion, I don't even, I don't know whether, who proposed it, but that we would have a member from both foundations.
And that could satisfy the community member at the same time.
Yeah, that's what I was, that would be, because they are representing the community in their first place, so.
So you're up to 14.
Are we up to 14? Oh, nice.
Well, how many trustees? Not all of us are going to.
It sounds like.
No. So we have, what would be comfortable in terms of how many trustees we would want to participate?
Well, you know, I see, I see two things. One is just, in the preliminary steps and trying to get everything organized, we would work through the co-chairs and the EEO, and then bring that back to the full board. And then we will determine, as a whole board, what we think that our representation on the committee should be.
I'm not sure, could you say, I'm not sure what you mean, or I'm missing it or something?
Okay, now, in the preliminary process right now, there's three of us working, trying to get, work with Fran to try to get this all straightened out.
Okay.
Okay, now, this meeting is to try to provide input of what we would like to see preliminarily. But once we kind of get things organized.
Once you three.
Three, get things organized, we bring it back to the board, full board. And then we would select input, whether we would make additions, corrections, or whatever we would want to do, as a full board. Now, that's my vision. If you think something different would work better, then.
I'm not sure I'm understanding yet.
Well, let's talk about what happens in the field with your other colleagues. So what your other colleagues do, they decide either no trustees on the committee, or a minority, not minority meaning.
You can't have, you can't have any more than three.
You can't have a quorum.
You can't have a quorum, so you can't have more than three.
You can't have a quorum. So that's what I mean by minority. You have to have, like, three.
Create the most.
That's the top. And there are pros and cons, and I'll just go through it with you, because you're going to decide. The pros are, you're able to see the candidates, or potential candidates, in a different format. You get to screen their paperwork, you get to see them in an interview. Some call that two bites of the apple. The con argument of trustees on the committee is the unspoken, hidden message between the lines to staff, oh, they don't trust us to make the right decision. So trustees make this decision based on the culture of their institution and what they want to do, because this is your hire. So I would suggest that no more than three. Some boards I've known, I have known and worked with, they divide themselves in a subcommittee for the selection of the CEO, not only to serve on the screening committee and the interview, and during the interview process, but because once there are lead, a lead candidate, that subcommittee of three usually are the ones who are helping to figure out the contract information. And I don't know if you do your work that way here or not, but some boards do that. There's a subcommittee that's, you know, coming up with some work for the rest of the board around contract, what's comparable, what's, you know, out there in the market, blah, blah, blah. So that would be my recommendation, is to go with three, if that's, if you want board participation at that level. If you don't want board participation at that level, then you just wait till the final.
I see a potential problem, Fran, if we do want to keep the numbers low, and it makes sense, that, I guess I come up with a list that I imagine everybody would pretty close replicate, and I've come up with 14 already. So let me read my list, just to get everybody. The chair, the co-chair, two trustees, one student, two presidents, two academic senate presidents, one EEO member, CSEA, LTAC, and two foundation members. That's 14.
That's 14.
And that's, and that is, I don't want to use the word, and that's excluding YFA, that they're not on there figuring that, that the academic senate presidents, but you could easily add YFA to that list.
I would.
So if you add YFA, that's 15.
Okay, but you didn't have any community members as a, as a stand.
The foundation, two foundation slash community members.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
So 15 is a good number.
It's getting up there.
And the nice thing, I like uneven numbers in this kind of situation. It's a good.
That would be three board members, because Abe appointed himself as chair, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's one thing that I would be willing to, if we're worried about the numbers, we could go down to 14, I guess.
Well, I like the odd.
Yeah, odd numbers, good. Yeah, I like odd numbers.
Yeah, I do, too.
In a real broad sense, without, the purpose of the committee is to come up with the finalists for the whole board, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. So we have to have a lot of faith in them.
Can I change that just a little? The purpose of the committee is, based on the parameters that the trustees set in this meeting and subsequent meetings, the, the search committee searches for somebody that fits those parameters. So in my estimation, it's really crucial that we set what we're looking for, not the search committee setting what there's, what we think.
Yeah, that is a concern of mine. And if what you say happens, I'll be happy.
Okay.
Do you have any ballpark idea about how many applicants we're going to get in this search?
Yes, I do. I believe we could see up to 30. Anything between, I always say, at this level, at the faculty level and other levels, there's a whole nother, it's a whole nother ballgame. But at this level, anything between 18 and 25 is really good. Especially if your search consultant has recruited at least half of those people, if not more. Okay? Because not everybody who applies may be someone I've called, or, you know, twisted their arm, or whatever. But those are really good numbers.
And then will you screen out those applicants that don't fit our criteria?
No.
We don't see them?
Okay, let's talk about that. What we're going to do.
Wait, let me, let's finalize the committee that Mike presented.
Okay, we'll come back to that, Don.
We'll come right back to it.
So Abe, did you say you as chair and two trustees, so three trustees?
Well, that's what Mike is, had recommended, yeah.
Okay, so then we're at 15.
We're at 15.
Okay, so that'll bring us up to 15, thanks. Anybody?
Gina, you checked my math.
Yeah.
Teresa and I did.
Yeah, we did.
We had enough fingers and toes to do that.
I'd like to hear it again, go through the, I'd like to hear the 15 again.
Okay, so one chair.
Okay, that's one trustee.
One co-chair.
That's Teresa.
Two trustees.
Okay.
One student trustee. Two presidents. Two academic senate. One CSEA. One leadership team, or LTAC. One YFA. Two foundation slash community members. And EEO.
I'd just like to discuss briefly the two academic senate you're envisioning, the Columbia Academic Senate and the MJC, the presidents.
Yeah, let's clarify that, too, Gina, so you.
I think we were thinking two, because they, they're both colleges, and they are very different, and it doesn't have to be the president, you don't have to pick the president, but the president could see.
Gets to a point.
Gets to a point. Gets to a point.
Okay, so to finalize, are we all in agreement with that?
I can go with that.
We don't want, that'll, that'll be the committee, 15 people.
All right.
Okay?
We can work with that. Okay, now, can we go back to Don's question? So what we'll do is, we'll establish the minimum qualifications. And the minimum is usually the minimum. You cast a wide net, and you say, nothing less than a master's, or JD, or doctorate, or whatever your minimum is. You're going to have a minimum, so many years of experience at the senior level, usually that's three to five, you can choose three or five. And that's pretty much it, that's minimum. Now, in the job announcement, we can say, just because you meet the minimum, doesn't mean you're going to get an interview. But it does cast a wide net to bring in people who will have higher experience and higher degrees. So the answer is yes. I can screen for minimums, and everybody who doesn't meet the minimums goes to the committee. And the committee gets to screen, you'll have a rubric for the screening. The rubric, which is an evaluation form, follows your job announcement, so that you're screening A for A, and B for B, and C for C, and D for D. You're screening applicants to be interviewed. And for those of you who will be on the committee, you'll see how that works. It works out pretty well, because what happens is, you end up having candidates interviewed who meet what you're looking for in your, in your job announcement, both in terms of preferred qualification, desirable attributes, et cetera, et cetera. So it works out pretty well. And when we get to the job announcement, I can talk more about that. I think we might be getting there now. So to clarify, just clarify one thing, you will only take out those applications that do not meet the minimum qual. Like, if somebody has a bachelor's degree, and that's it, you toss them, yeah. But everybody else, the committee would get to read their applications, okay? This is the last search, and I'm passing this out, because it's a good example of what you'll see again. Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So if you open it up. You found the back page, it says minimum qualifications, that's what I'm talking about. So I'll screen for minimum qualifications, and by the way, by the way, this section is well-written, and applies even today. I don't, there may be something to add or tweak, but it's a very well-written section. But that's an example of what I would look for in terms of who will not be seen by the committee versus who will be seen. We can use this as a guideline for the future position announcement, unless there are some significant changes. And some of these questions I've already asked you for your homework assignment, and we'll get to that a little later. But it will be similar, it will be similar. You're going to update some of this today for consideration, and just to make sure you're still looking for what you want to have. And that the announcement will say it.
Was this an actual search that we did?
I know, let's see, who did the search, it'll tell you.
But this is one that was used, Teresa?
Yeah.
I'm going to.
This is one Lucy pulled up from the last search that we did.
First time I've seen it, so.
Yeah, I've seen it before.
Yeah, it was, it was well put together.
I've seen it a long time ago.
Long time ago.
This wasn't for Joan?
No. I don't remember seeing it for Joan, do you? We didn't go out for a search, did we, for Joan? I think she came up.
I don't remember reading any.
And we had, yeah, we did, we did a search for Joan.
Yeah, I mean, we did it internally.
Internally.
We didn't go, we didn't use a consultant.
So one of the, one of the things that we're going to move down, obviously, is developing the job announcement and brochure. We'll come back to that, because we're going to spend a lot of time talking about some of the characteristics and aspects of that brochure. A process for soliciting input, school is out, right? You're done. The earliest we could solicit input from your college community, campus community, would be August, right?
Okay, no.
Would it be August?
Well, was, did you arrange to give her a copy of this?
No. Did, do you not, do you, have you been informed that we did a survey monkey?
No, I'm not aware of it, but that's good news.
That's something you should be sure that she gets.
I should know about that.
I agree.
There's something that we should give you.
Should have given.
Graciela, can you make that available when you get, we'll get a break here.
If I take a break, I will turn it out.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I'm happy to have that. So you've already done that.
Well, I mean, you need to look at what we did, and see if it's.
It was.
We had 87 answers.
That's nice.
We asked what we would like to see in the chancellor, and some, some went, yes, they had addressed it as such, and some did it as a scoring card for someone, and against someone, so. But it, but it was good input, I think.
Yeah.
I read the whole thing, and some of it was repetitious, but that's, that's it.
That's good, to have repetition, because then you know how many people care about it.
That's right. Okay, good. Well, I look forward to reviewing that. Well, I won't worry about that, that is very good news.
Well, when you say you won't worry about what?
Okay, I'm not, I was, I was concerned that we wouldn't get any campus.
Input.
Input and engagement before they went away.
But we did, we have some, but, but.
Of course, you're going to need, once we get, once we get, I mean, that's not the end of it, I don't think.
Well.
I mean, that just gives you an idea.
It's a star, but what are you saying, we need more? We're going to go out and solicit again, another survey monkey? They had their chance already.
Yeah, I agree. I think, if I hear you right, I think that what we're seeking input is maybe having a forum discussion type of thing, or, or just.
No, not yet.
Okay, so.
We're going to have, we have something different opinions.
Oh, I've been told not to walk away from the mic. I'm not following instructions very well, but I'm going to try. Okay. So with all due respect, trustee Rojas, we, if you're, if we can make it work in this timeline, so we get to the end, to your, your end here, we can do that. But if they're not back until August?
August.
That would be the earliest, you could do another, not survey, but maybe campus forums.
And Fran, I'm curious, once we solicit the committee, and we have, like, the academic senate presidents and the YFA presidents, have you ever seen it work, that then those leaders go and ask for input from their constituents?
Yes, I have.
Because I'm thinking that could be done by email, or?
And that's the easiest way, and it's very expeditious.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's a very expeditious idea. And then we'll have the information even quicker.
And it might just complement what they.
Exactly. I think that's all that's necessary. I don't think you have to, I think all you have to do is make a fair, honest effort to get input. And as long as you can stand behind the fact that you made a fair and honest effort to get input, you're okay. And I think this next idea that's been proposed is the next step. And I think this next idea that's been proposed is, is the next step. And then, we can put all of that together with what you're going to provide today, and then we have something to get started. I would like to have your brochure ready to go when your new quarters, quarter?
Semester.
Semester system begins. Have it ready to go. In other words, at that first committee meeting where we're outlining the parameters of the search, that announcement is, is pretty much it. Because once your announcement is done, I can start recruiting. And I want to do that as soon as possible.
And hopefully, by the end of the day, you'll, you'll have most of what you need to do there.
I think I will.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be my goal.
Yeah, I'm looking for the additional input, just to be confirming, you know? Nothing that'll pop out that'll be so weird, but I think by the end of the day, I'll have enough to get started.
Okay, you have the timeline here, so where would we put, we're, we're going to wait till faculty gets back, right? And then, we're going to contact them again. So, through the summer, we're not getting too much done yet, in, in other words, so.
No.
No.
Semester starts back in August, doesn't it?
Yeah, it starts in August.
So, that's when we should have it.
That's when, well, I, it sounds like the Teresa's email idea, we'll have information and input back within the next weeks or so, because the appointment process is going to start. And they're going to be queried. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. I wondered if you've had that process.
Yeah, it works.
Does that make sense, that once the committee, or the board decides that we go and contact the leadership, and we ask them to appoint, then I would think the timeline would be that then we ask those appointees to put out the question, if there's more input, or the president.
And give them a timeline to get it back to you.
Definitely, that's, that's my-
But some may just say what you've, one of you have said, that, well, we did survey monkey, so we don't- Or, they may say, you know what, darn it, I didn't do that survey monkey, I'm going to-
It's a second shot.
Add more info. I mean, I'm just brainstorming here, but.
It's a good idea. And that would be great, because again, it's, I don't think it's going to be that much different than what you already have. But even if it is, it should conform with what you're going to say, what your survey monkey has said. We'll have, I'll have all of that to start structuring your announcement. And then, you have to approve the announcement over the summer. Over the summer, we need the board to meet and approve the announcement. Today, we're going to get it all together. I'm going to type it up. I'm going to get it back to Teresa and Gina. But you, you'll have to approve it in June or July, whichever time slot is, is best.
Well, you know, to me, the most important thing is to have all the applicants. And, and this, that can be done over the summer. And so, that, to me, even though we won't have committees meeting, I mean, what's, don't you usually give a month or longer to submit an application? How long do you give?
Us, we usually say forty-five to sixty days for recruitment.
Okay, so, so if we're going to, the meaning, it would be open for that long?
Be open, forty-five to sixty days.
So, to me, it's critical that in June, the recruitment brochure goes out.
Goes out.
So, when you say July, that scares me.
Okay, so, Joan, you, as soon as you approve that, that job announcement, it's, it's hitting the wire, trust me.
Okay, that sounds good.
And that happens really fast.
Fran, to that point, can you start too early on certain things?
Such as?
Well, I mean, to get some really good applicants, but the process is drying out so long that those people you have targeted are taking jobs elsewhere.
Yeah. The recruitment period would start right after your approval of the job announcement. So, we're talking July, August, sixty days. You could extend it to September tenth, just, you know, for extra. That's a good timeline. And there are individuals that I have already targeted. There's no announcement to give them, but I've certainly asked them to think about it, and I'll call them again. So, no, I think we'll be okay. The, I think you're absolutely right. June is critical. June is critical, for the approval of the announcement. The earlier, the better. And I like the email idea and a timeline for them to get the information back, and then you can just forward it to me. Is that, Teresa?
Yeah, a follow-up on that, obviously, it needs to be the, a consistent message. So, would we have the board come up with what they're asking, or is it just that simple, similar to the survey monkey question?
It's very, it's very similar. You could ask them the same questions.
Oh, when you get a copy of that, you'll, you'll be more familiar with what we're talking about. I have a copy, if you'd like to just review it.
I think she's going to, you're going to send me one, right?
I was going to get it for you, but-
Yeah, don't worry.
Let you know approximately what it was, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get one. Okay, that's good. Good, good, good.
Okay, so, another question now. I, I, I like the proposed timeline here. And we have here that we, in June, we're going to approve that announcement. Hopefully, till day, we'll have that. So, so what's our target for July? And we know in August, when faculty gets back, then we send out, we send out. How soon are we going to send out the request for the, the individuals to be selected? Yeah, that's, when would we want that?
To get the committee together?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's June, we select the committee, right? So, I can write that in there, so.
I will start.
By the end of June, we want the committees to select it, yes? No?
What's today made? I would think that's plenty of time, by the end of June.
I'm just putting bullets here.
We should have it within a couple of weeks, actually.
Select committee.
They'll respond quickly. In, in most instances, you're going to get the president. This is too important, and they're not going to want to appoint somebody.
Oh, appoint, interesting, yeah, that's probably-
So, you're going to get the president, probably of each one of the associations.
Okay, I think that's very good. And the board is going to approve the selection committee and the timeline and the job announcement, probably all in one big meeting in June. Everything will be official. There will be no hint or problem that the board didn't put their stamp on who's going to do the screening and interviewing, what the announcement looks like, and what the timeline is. It's all official, those three things, in June. Okay, so that's excellent. Then, in August, when everybody's back, we'll call a first committee meeting. And obviously, this timeline, Teresa and Gina and I will update this timeline for you. So, in August, we'll call the first committee meeting. I don't have a date yet, but I can start sending, we can start looking at some dates even now, if, if you'd like. It's not too early. But that'll be the first committee meeting, and then the second, and that, that committee, there's a full agenda. It'll be very important to let the selection committee know, not that we're going to use the whole time, but I always ask, we schedule three to four hours. The meeting should be three to four hours. There's a lot to cover. And if we don't need all the time, we don't use it, you know, we just leave early. The next meeting for the committee, that will be the meeting, most likely, where they will choose who's going to be interviewed. In other words, no, actually, I have that in October. No, not, we could move that up.
Good.
Because I think we all want to do that. So, I'm going to just say, the September meeting will choose or select applicants. And that'll be a full meeting, block off three to four hours, just in case. What happens at the committee level, as you might know, there's a lot of discussion and questions, and, you know, you want to make sure everybody is comfortable and confident about what, you know, the process. So, that's what eats up a lot of the time.
Well, wouldn't like EEOC training take up a lot of time, too?
Some training, yeah, and that would happen in the first meeting, yeah.
Yeah, about an hour.
Okay.
Hour and a half.
Just saying that's-
Yeah. Okay, and then in October, um-
No, we should have already had the applications.
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, we just-
Yeah, we just did, okay. So, we have to have a third, yeah, we have to have a third meeting because the deadline will close, the committee will screen, and then they'll choose. That's the sequence. And, and between August and September, I'm not sure there's enough time to do that.
To, 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 to choose?
To screen.
To screen?
Um-